So I heard that the widow was still on the property. And my next one, interesting news.
Well, if we ever get him, he's on the way to my wife's side.
My next trainer is ready. I told me that he was talking to her. So I said, she should be more than one year old.
Yeah. How many times did she probably say that?
It continues.
He's got a lot of energy.
Well, I was about to say, I was about to say he's hyperactive actually.
Yeah, and he's smart easily, yeah.
He works hard.
Very hard.
And he really does. I guess he was smarter than I would have assumed. Quite frankly. No one's going to answer it.
The rumors keep flying.
Yeah, get yourself in the last.
Hopefully he'll stay out.
And I got a text message from someone who wanted to know what I knew about the Carson County.
Yeah. Is that?
Right.
So I only heard that.
Like today.
I could have heard. There was something in the newspaper about it. I mean, you acquired it, it was an article several months ago about one nonprofit taking over and some land sold off. So it's been in there.
I haven't seen it.
Hey, Amber.
Hey.
Coming to the mic. Thinking of a matter of ways, Spencer, even if I just re-mow our old house because I need pictures tomorrow. We're going to market. You can all that too, a little far up down.
I'm making it.
Should we peel it?
Yeah, it's a real estate.
It's not, it's not sold.
Curved deal.
It's sold.
It goes on the market Monday. They take pictures tomorrow. So that's why I'm getting everything done because I tried the other night and the sky's open.
Did you stage into all that stuff?
I'll put some salad. I'm not sure.
I don't think it helps either.
Yeah.
It really depends a lot on your buyer. There are some people that just can't imagine what things would look like. And then there was my wife and I when we bought our first house, the one we actually decided to buy. We started, we always had a tape with us who always measured. We were in the kitchen deciding to add a wall and knock down a wall and whatever. And the realtor's like looking at us. It's like seven o'clock in the evening. She happened to know the owner. We had figured this out. We said, you might want to go have a cup of coffee with the owner. We're going to be here a while. We don't just walk through and walk out. We're serious. We're going to be here for an hour or so. You might as well.
Yeah, it's a good sign if we're here for that long.
So she took our suggestion. Gave her verbal offer at night and signed it in office the next morning.
And that's where you are still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's awesome. We never actually saw the lot until we bought, until we had already committed to it because there was snow on the ground. And we just figured there was some planting. Other than a few mature trees that were left on the side of the house. It wasn't a single, it was, you know, when the spring would come, thinking some things would come up. Nothing came up but weeds.
It's a clean slate.
It was very clean. Like there wasn't even a single foundation planted.
Okay. Patrice is on.
All right. Now at six thirty-four, the White Marsh Township meeting is called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then I turn it over to Fran for the announcements.
Thanks, J.C. The township was presented with the PSAT's Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors Citizen Communication Award for the outstanding efforts and achievement in citizen communication in the category of multimedia communication for our stormwater management in White Marsh public service announcement video. Special credit goes out to our media production coordinator, Rob Brown, for his tireless efforts to provide a wide range of information to all township residents. No Rob here. Congratulations to Rob. That's awesome. The township would also like to thank all who marched in the Fourth of July Parade and the many spectators who attended. The township also gives thanks to the Lions Club, community volunteers, the Police Department, Public Works Department, Fire Marshal's Office, White Marsh Community Ambulance Association, Barron Hill Volunteer Fire Company, Spring Mill Fire Company, emergency service volunteers from other communities, the Fourth of July Parade Committee, the great Tom Blumstrom and the Parks and Rec Department for their organization and participation in making it such a wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. And I'm just going to add one more thing. I just want to give a shout out to Charlie Guttenplan and wish him a very happy birthday, which is today.
Happy birthday.
Great to have you. Happy birthday.
Get another year.
Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from the Board of Supervisors meeting on May eighth, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
I just want to make a note that Vince will be abstaining because he was not present at that meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from the Board of Supervisors meeting from June twelfth?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to Board Public Hearings, Board Public Discussion Items. We're reviewing the proposed conditional preliminary final subdivision approval for a property owned by White Marsh Township at fourteen Marple Lane, Plymouth Meeting, to subdivide ten point two one acre lot into two lots of zero point four eight four acres and nine point seven three acres. Fourteen Marple Lane would be the zero point four eight four acre lot. I'm going to turn it over to you, Krista.
Good evening, thank you. As you know, the Abolition Hall Steering Committee recommended that fourteen Marple Lane be subdivided from the property. And as you mentioned, the original.
Just a quick question. Is your microphone on by chance? No? I just want to make sure everybody can hear you.
Just put it closer.
Perfect. Thank you.
The original mother lot was ten point two one four acres. And as you mentioned, it would be reduced to nine point seven three acres and the fourteen Marple Lane property would be point four eight four acres. Our office performed a onsite survey, an onsite wetland delineation, and the Planning Commission reviewed the application at their May twenty seventh, 2025 meeting and recommended approval of the subdivision and granting of the waivers with deferral of the traffic impact fee as they don't opine on that normally. So tonight, we're asking for your approval. And any questions? Have to answer.
If you could speak a little bit more to the wetland delineation that you did? It'd be great.
So it is located, okay, we have that up on the screen. It's located at the rear of the property. Most of it is on the larger property that the township is retaining. There's a small portion that is on fourteen Marple Lane. And on our record plan, we also show in addition to the wetland, the Riparian Corridor Conservation District. And then the, an additional setback from that equal to half of the yard setback. And that will permanently record the restricted area as certain things can't be done within the Riparian Corridor Conservation District. So it'll be permanently protected and recorded that way at the county.
Thank you so much. Any board comment? Any public comment? Sedell.
Good evening. Sedell Zo is this one?
Yeah, should be.
I deeply appreciate the effort that Krista and her team put into delineating the wetland. And based on some numbers that she provided to me, it's twenty four thousand five hundred fifty-nine square feet, which is substantial. And so thank you for that. And however, I do want to once again express my disappointment in the township's decision to sell off, to subdivide and put up for sale, the Marple Lane property. Real estate land is precious and I would far prefer that the township retain title to this almost half acre parcel in order to preserve the opportunity for options in the future. I realize that one of the primary impetus here is to raise funds, perhaps as much as or maybe more than the appraised value, which came in at $200,000 for the parcel, in order to invest those funds in improvements on the primary parcel and the, primarily the buildings because the open space fund will pick up the cost of any improvements to the land. I think it's short sighted to sell off fourteen Marple Lane. I understand why you're doing it. However, as I pointed out previously, the township could use, use the appraisal that it has as the basis upon which it could apply open space dollars to permanently conserve that land and in a sense reimburse itself. I don't know how the mechanics would work, but something similar was done over at the Hall parcel where the land was acquired with open space dollars and the open space maintenance fund was tapped to demolish the house that was there on the Hall parcel. So presumably, a very similar model could be used here at fourteen Marple Lane because I know the township does not want to burden itself with having to take care of another old property, one that needs significant investment. So I'm disappointed that the decision has been made to subdivide and sell off. However, focusing on the wetland, which is precious and serves many purposes and has the potential to serve yet more as an outdoor classroom for the community. The record plan, I looked at very carefully on my computer, the one that's here, and I recognized that not only is the wetland significant in square footage, but the Riparian Corridor Conservation District buffer has been shown as well as the additional setback. So twenty-five foot buffer and the twelve and a half foot setback. However, as I raised in my comments before the Planning Commission, Chapter fifty-eight of the code, grading erosion control, stormwater management, and best management practices, includes the following provision. It's Chapter fifty-eight, Section sixteen regarding riparian buffers. It reads as follows. In order to protect and improve water quality, a riparian buffer easement shall be created and recorded as part of any subdivision or land development that encompasses a riparian buffer. Furthermore, in Section fifty-eight sixteen D, it goes on to say, the riparian buffer easement shall be enforceable by the township and shall be recorded in the appropriate county recorder of deeds office so that it shall run with the land and shall limit the use of the property therein. The easement shall allow for the continued private ownership and shall count toward the minimum lot area required by zoning unless otherwise specified. I did not see a waiver request for, for these two elements of Chapter fifty-eight in the waiver list. I raised this at the Planning Commission, as I recall, and I think the Planning Commission's minutes attest to this. The solicitor, Dave Sander, said that he would confer with Krista and follow the code. So I'm wondering, why, one, why is there not a waiver listed for this, these two provisions of fifty-eight sixteen? And it seems to me that if it's not listed, then, then an easement shall be recorded.
I can take that. Fifty-eight sixteen B further defines the riparian buffer easement in this case as measured to the limit of the one hundred year floodplain. And this is not a floodplain, but a wetland. So it doesn't apply in this case.
Okay, although I didn't print it out, elsewhere in the code, there is a definition for riparian, riparian corridor, riparian district. And as I read that, it seemed that this did apply, but I assume you've conferred with counsel and you're clear.
Yeah, this is a riparian buffer easement and I'm, probably what you looked at was riparian corridor conservation district. So it's slightly different.
Okay. So it doesn't apply to this, to this wetland?
Correct.
Okay. I am concerned about enforcement and I'm wondering, how will the township enforce the buffer and the setback in the future if and when this property is sold? How does, how does that happen?
If, if there's a violation of Chapter fifty-eight, my understanding is that is enforced by the code enforcement official. I don't think anybody's going to be walking around on a day-to-day basis checking, but if we became aware of something.
Right. But if a building permit came in?
Oh, yeah. It would be fully reviewed for.
Absolutely. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen approving conditional preliminary final subdivision to create a separate parcel, fourteen Marple Lane, as a zero point four eight four acre lot that will reduce the original lot from ten point two one acres to nine point seven three acres as presented tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McAnally, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Ms. Moyn?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Chair Toll?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifteen approving and executing a mutual aid agreement between White Marsh and Whitpain Townships for fire, explosion, or emergency disasters?
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to call up Andrew Thomas. Give us some more information. Thank you, Andrew.
Good evening. It's assisting, it's an agreement for White Marsh and Whitpain to assist each other in fire investigations. So that way, if something does happen to either one of the investigators, we are covered under insurance and we're not just freelancing and showing up at other ones' scenes.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any board comment or questions? Any public comment or questions? Hearing none. Mr. McAnally, please call the roll.
Yes, Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Ms. Moyn?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Chair Toll?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen approving and executing a mutual aid agreement between White Marsh and Whitpain Townships for the use of designated township buildings in cases of a forced evacuation of their own facilities for emergency operation services?
So moved.
Second. Andrew, I'll have you come back up.
No problem. This was brought up by Divit after the unfortunate circumstances that happened in Upper Dublin when the tornado came through. So since both municipalities, our backup EOCs are very close to our township buildings, in case some storm comes in and happens to wipe out our infrastructure, we can utilize the other township's infrastructure to get our feedback on the ground and continue to operate.
Great. Any board comment or questions?
Smart move.
Thank you.
Any public comment or questions? Hearing none. Mr. McAnally, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Ms. Moyn?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Chair Toll?
Yes.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept the resignation letter of Robert Dampman from the Planning Commission? And I want, oh, go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
And I want to thank Bob for his many years of dedicated service to the Planning Commission. I know that Vince, you worked closely with Bob and know him well, and he will be missed.
Absolutely.
I believe he's moving out of the area?
To Florida.
Wow. There you go. Do I have a motion to appoint?
All those in favor.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint Carmen Bashong to the Plan Commission to fill the vacant seat with the term expiring on twelve thirty-one, 2028?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comment or questions? Any public comment? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint Donald Norbeck to the Planning Commission to fill the vacant seat with the term expiring twelve thirty-one, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept the proposal of Mark B. Thompson Associates to perform an existing conditions assessment and framework for future considerations at the Abolition Hall property as recommended by the Abolition Hall Steering Committee in the amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand dollars and a timeframe of twelve months?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comments or questions? Any public comment?
We have Claire.
All right. Claire, did you want to?
We don't have any questions, but you don't need any more information. I don't have any.
Yeah, I think the, I, given how far this has come in so many different places, I think that most people have seen the proposal. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the bid award of Jackson Drive Stormwater Project to Joseph J. Daniel LLC in the amount of seven hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and one dollars and thirty-four cents?
So moved.
Second. Any board comment or question? Do I need to turn this over to you?
Um, yeah, probably.
Go ahead.
On July first, 2025, the bids were opened for the Jackson Drive Stormwater Improvement Project. We had nine bidders and Joseph J. Daniel LLC was the low bidder at seven hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and one dollars and thirty-four cents. And we were recommending that the board authorize a notice of intent to award and notice of award would be conditioned on the outcome of a responsible contractor review, which is a thirty-day process.
Very good.
Thank you.
Be some happy people there.
Yes.
Any board comment or questions? Any public comment? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the base bid award of the 2025 Road Paving Program to Glasgow Inc. in the amount of ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-two cents?
So moved.
Second. Krista?
On July third, bids were opened for the 2025 Road Improvements Project. We had two bidders and we're recommending the low bid of ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-two cents be, well, a notice of intent to award to Glasgow Incorporated. And then again, this would be subject to a thirty-day responsible contractor review upon which hopefully a notice of award would be issued.
Thank you, Krista.
Any board comment or questions? Thank you, Krista. Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve a hold harmless agreement for Gemma Services at 5200 Butler Pike for an existing building in the ultimate right of way?
So moved.
Second.
Charlie, am I turning that over to you?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
You'll recall that the land development was approved by the board in March to allow the Martin Luther School to take over the property that used to be owned by ECRI. After that time, the applicants, engineers were modifying the plan to comply with all the reviews. One of the comments was that the ultimate right of way of Butler Pike had to be adjusted. It had been shown as sixty feet and in fact, it was eighty feet. And when that happened, one foot of the front of an accessory building on the front of the site fell within the ultimate right of way. So that is the reason we're. So that is the reason we're here. That's, I don't, can you progress to the next slide, please? I'm sorry, pass the whole, I want to go to the graphics at the end. Okay, thank you. That is the site, and if you go to the next slide, you'll see the, where the building is in the front of the site, and literally one foot of that building is now in the ultimate right-of-way. The solicitor's office worked with the applicant's attorney to come up with appropriate language, given the unique nature here. And actually, Denise Yarnoff, the applicant's attorney, is here. I don't know if she has any other comments, but there is no significance to this encroachment, and staff is recommending approval. Denise, anything? Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. Any board comment or questions? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve a hold harmless agreement for residential property at 657 Bethlehem Pike for replacement of existing fence in right-of-way?
So moved.
Second. Charlie.
Thank you. Again, Craig, if you could go to the, pass the actual text, I'd appreciate it. This is a situation where there's been a fence at this property for many years along Bethlehem Pike. The applicant came in to replace it with a similar fence, just because of the condition of the fence, was not changing anything. But in the process of review, we discovered that the original fence never had a permit. It was in the ultimate right-of-way, and in fact, was taller than it's supposed to be in that location. So we asked the applicant to engage in a hold harmless agreement, as well as go to the zoning hearing board to get permission to have a taller fence than what he's allowed. It's not taller than the maximum in the ordinance, but it's taller than where it is in the front yard. So as a result of measurements that the police traffic safety unit did, we determined that a major portion of this fence is also about a foot into the ultimate right-of-way all along the frontage of the house. And if you go to the next slide, please, you can kind of see from this picture, the area closest to the road is the portion, obviously, in the ultimate right-of-way, and it's quite close to the front of the house. There's really not a way to adjust it. There are trees between, mature trees between the house and the fence. And the police saw no issue from a safety standpoint with replacing the fence in its existing location. So again, staff is recommending approval of the hold harmless agreement.
Thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome.
Any board comment or questions? Any public comment? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the township solicitor's office to participate in a zoning hearing board appeal from a resident against the zoning hearing board approval of 201 Roberts Avenue as a multi-tenant building?
So moved.
Second.
Yes, thank you very much. This should just be authorization, as we've traditionally done here in White Marsh, to go ahead and, at the request of the zoning hearing board, be there, represent the interest and the opinion of our zoning officer, and enter our appearance before the zoning hearing board.
Thank you, Sean. Any board comment or questions? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the township solicitor's office to participate in a zoning hearing board appeal of the zoning officer's violation notice of a two-unit residential dwelling in a single-family residential district at 4006 Joshua Road?
So moved.
Second.
Yep, thank you. The other one was an appeal to, should clarify a little bit, the common pleas. This is going to be working with Mr. Guttenplan, because he, at the zoning hearing board hearing, he's likely to be queried about the basis of opinion. In the past, since I've been solicitor for 17 years now, we've always defended the zoning officer's opinion, helped him prepare, and that's what we'll be doing in this matter.
Thank you. Any board comment or questions? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the financial report for June 2025 reflecting expenditures of $638,692.50 and payroll totaling $757,278.16?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have, this is in the amended agenda portion, do I have a motion to accept and execute the contract service agreement with Beacon Hill Financial to provide the township with interim financial services?
So moved.
Second.
This is just an agreement with Beacon Hill Financial to help us with some vacancy in the finance department. And it's just a general employment contract that says that if they find someone to place here, we cannot say we don't need them and then hire them within the year.
Makes sense.
Where there's, where there's things to be had. But that's, so that's just a general condition upon this contract.
Thank you. Is there any board comment or question? Is there any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I want to, and, offer time for public comment at this moment. Does anybody have public comment? Does the board have any final comments? All right, I'm going to announce that the board had executive sessions on June 26th and tonight to discuss personnel matters. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night, White Marsh.